All right. 7:02. We'll call the November 12th Planning Board hearing on MBTA 3A to order. Do a quick roll call. Chris Boyce here. Honor Merceret.
Here.
Alyssa Gamble.
Here.
Sarah Jane Fornes.
Here.
Jason Palutro.
Here.
Okay, this, I hope is our final hearing, but this is a hearing on MBTA 3A. RKG is here to present what we hope is our final compliance plan. RKG will present, will make a few comments. Not a public hearing, but we really want to hear everybody's comments, so open up the public comment and then move forward. So, we'll start with Eric Albersham from RKG, who will take it away with our plan.
Okay. Great. Try to do this.
Yeah.
Sorry, Jim. Okay. Hello, members of the planning board, members of the public, once again. Eric Albersham, principal with RKG Associates, here to present what, at least we believe, is the scenario for you to discuss tonight. So, for the recommended compliance scenario, it's largely what was presented, I think, by the chair and the town manager, I think, at the last meeting that I wasn't able to attend. So, we'll just kind of go over that again. If there's any questions from the board, happy to answer. So, what we have are two, the same two proposed MBTA 3A districts, which we've named Seal Harbor Road and Governors Park. These would be the two 3A districts for compliance purposes that the zoning that we'll talk about in a minute would actually apply to. So, just in terms of the statistics, we have about 26 acres, 23.8 net acres. A unit capacity, just in those two districts, of 669 units. Again, that's zoning capacity, has nothing to do with development, just what it would be zoned for, and a density of 28.2 dwelling units per acre. As we've talked about before, the 669 units is below the 882 that the town needs per the MBTA guidelines, so we're using the, we're able to use the central business district as a mixed-use offset to pick up the additional 221 units to get us to a total of 890 units. Again, as I've said a couple of times, the 3A zoning that you're going to be talking about and that we're putting before you really cover, it only covers Seal Harbor and Governors Park. The CBD continues to use the zoning that the town has had, had adopted, you know, well before 3A was even a thing, and that will continue to be in place. We're really talking about these two districts here that are up on the screen in terms of the new zoning. So, just to dive in really quick, these are images and information I know you all have seen before. So, just for the Seal Harbor Road 3A district, the parcels on the map to the right side in blue are the parcels that would be considered for the overlay district. All of the zoning parameters that are up on the screen in the table to the top are the same as what we saw before. We discussed the deviation from the existing base zoning on the lot area per dwelling unit. We needed to take that to 1,600 square feet in order to come up with the density and the unit capacity that we needed in the district. So, a small change, I think today it's 2,000 square feet per dwelling unit. We had to lower that to 1,600. Hearing concerns from the last meeting and talking with the chair and the town manager just about the potential for subdivision or subdividing land in this district, we actually increased the minimum lot size to 100,000 square feet. So, Allison, if you can go to the next slide, I think we've got the reasons behind that. So, there were concerns about subdividing the Fort Heath, the Fort Heath property. That property is about 113, almost 114,000 square feet or 2.6 acres in size. That's the piece in the yellow there. By increasing the minimum lot size in the overlay, the 3A overlay district, to 100,000 square feet, effectively eliminates the ability to subdivide and create two 100,000-square-foot conforming parcels. So, for better or worse, that's how we dealt with that, so it doesn't seem like there'd be any possibility of subdividing that if you were to recommend this zoning. The second one that we talked about is Governors Park. Everything with the base zone stayed the same, again, with the exception of the lot area per dwelling unit, which we've talked about before. We needed to lower that from, today it's 2,500 square feet per unit, down to 1,800 square feet per unit. Again, that was to get the density and the unit capacity to where we needed it. So, again, that's, that's the only change there with that district. Coming out of the last meeting, the chair and the town manager had talked about some concern around the RPM fitness, sort of not really conforming to what people know as Governors Park. So, to, again, address public comment about that, we removed the RPM fitness parcel from the overlay district. We did have to sort of tweak the lot area per dwelling unit down to what you saw on the last slide, because, again, we're losing area that was, that was developed, that was providing additional unit capacity. We had to make that up by using what you see here on the screen. So, that's what we did there. So, again, listening to public comment, trying to be as responsive as we possibly can, we dropped that parcel out of that district. So, in terms of the modeling and meeting, the requirements of the guidelines and the law, we believe we're presenting to you a fully compliant scenario. As you may have seen, I don't know how much you've seen, but we did work with the town manager's office to submit a pre-application review from the executive office of Housing and Livable Communities. That review came back a few weeks ago. I've been a part of seeing a number of these letters in the communities that we've been working in. Their comments were extremely minor, so I'd say you have a compliance scenario here. They reviewed the draft zoning and all of our compliance modeling work, and looks like we're in good shape, should the town choose to move forward. Just in terms of the zoning bylaw, it largely follows the, what they call the sample zoning or the model zoning bylaw that the state had put together for communities to essentially use, so that they wouldn't have to start from scratch. So, here we're talking about an overlay district known here as the multifamily overlay district, MFOD. It covers the Seal Harbor Road and Governors Park. So, within the MFOD, because we have different dimensional regulations for those two districts, we call each of those out as its own sub-district under the MFOD, and this way we can assign those different dimensional regulations, as we showed in the previous slide. Again, the MFOD is a multifamily housing overlay. Housing would then be permitted as of right, but there would still be site plan review by the planning board. So, you, those applicants would still have to come before you with the site plan and meet your site plan requirements, just as they would today. The only thing you wouldn't be able to do is, you know, there's no special permit provision here. So, it's as of right with site plan. And we also included an affordable housing provision for the two overlay districts, or for the MFOD and the two sub-districts, I should say. So, any, if, if any new housing was to come before you in those two districts, they would need to provide at least 10% of those units as deed-restricted affordable housing to households at 80% of the area median income or below. So, we did add that in there. So, at least, if anything ever did come before you in these two districts, they would need to have some level of affordability, which is good. Yeah, and this is just a summary slide, again, of the deviations. And the one thing I did want to mention is, I believe that the impact of this would be extremely low to absolutely nothing, because we're putting it over existing housing, and the zoning parameters that we're, you know, recommending to you for consideration actually have a lower unit capacity number than the number of units that currently exist today. So, if something were to happen to those buildings or something in the future, God forbid, you know, under the overlay at least, that we're talking about, they'd be built back with fewer units than exist today. The one change that I know we had talked about to the, to the town's existing zoning bylaws as it pertains to the CBD district, in EOHLC's review of that district and the zoning, the only place where they did find a special permit provision in the zoning, as we've talked about before, is with this payment in lieu for covering parking there. And we're just recommending that the planning board consider, as part of this, removing just the special permit provision and changing that from special permit to site plan. So, you, again, you would still have oversight over that, it just wouldn't be through a discretionary permit, it would be through site plan review. By making that change, HLC would agree that using the CBD as a mixed-use offset district would be, would be fine. They just need to see that changed, since it does reference a special permit, and that is discretionary by the board. That's it?
Yep. Okay. Great. I think people are probably seeing some tweaks to what we saw last time, some tweaks that are informed by public comment, concerns that people have brought to us. RPM fitness is a good example of that. I think, you know, really great comments. We've got a lot of questions over email that, you know, I just wanted to address a couple of them, because it's hard to respond to every, every email that we get, and I think it's more fair to respond to them in a public forum than, than kind of one-off. But, to reiterate some things that I think people have heard generally at past hearings and, and especially from this board, we're, we're a recommending body in this case, right? The town council will have a vote on the plan itself, or on yes or no to 3A. Our mission is to recommend a plan, right? So, we're not the body for yes or no to 3A. I think we've made that clear. But, we have absolutely, I think, through this long process, heard everybody's comments, heard the concerns from the public. We share those concerns. Winthrop is a very dense town, one of the densest, I think, in Massachusetts. We have areas that actually already, and I think as Eric pointed out, meet the requirements of what the state is trying to outline for multifamily housing today. Our zoning doesn't reflect that. Those projects were approved through a special permit or otherwise. So, while the zoning in that district may not meet the housing density that exists there, those projects were, you know, permitted and allowed to go through. This is an example in these two districts, which I think, as you drive around town, everybody can acknowledge are the two more densified multifamily housing areas we have in town, meet the requirements, and that's why we're placing an overlay on these two areas. That allows us a compliance plan that we feel has no impact. When we go through the recommendation of a plan, CBD, for lack, I mean, I think the most accurate term, but, but not a state term, is that we're getting credit for the zoning that we've already done, right? So, we're not getting credit for every unit that may be built there, we're getting credit for a percentage of the units that will be built. But, the goal of that, MMU, as I think Eric had up, is a mandatory mixed-use overlay, that offset. That means we still will require ground floor commercial. The walkable pedestrian node, that's a retail node with ground floor commercial, will still be required. It'll allow people to build residential above, and because the town, just like how dense we are in the other districts that we named, will get to take credit for those units above. Ultimately, you know, all, as I said before, all we can do is recommend a plan, right? Ultimately, if this plan does move forward and is codified in our zoning text, the only areas you will see an offset outlined are Seal Harbor Road, Governors Park. There won't be an offset, a state offset for 3A in the CBD. The CBD, we're getting credit for those units. We will make some provisional changes to zoning, the parking in lieu of fee, which I think after this is a worthy item, the value of that parking should be debated and discussed. But, that's the one provision that, that we will probably modify to make this work. But, otherwise, there's no changes to the CBD. What that means, I guess, you know, I think we talked about it, but I just want to make sure we're reiterating it tonight, is that nothing that can't be built today in town would be built or developed through this plan. And CBD zoning has been in place, four stories, mixed-use, residential above retail, has been in place for over a decade, right? So, we've seen the results of it in some cases, and we've seen the CBD have slow progress, right? But, but that is the only area where we will see change, and that change is not a result of 3A. That's a result of zoning efforts that were made over a decade ago. You know, so I, I hope that, I, we have heard the discourse in town, we certainly have heard the comments at other public hearings, we've heard the comments in this room as it comes to us. I hope people feel that this plan has been an iterative evolution that's informed by your comments and concerns, trying to hone in the area. People have asked questions, simple ones, right? Why are we showing more acres in the overall plan than are maybe required as a minimum? State law would say minimum's 15 acres. If we complied with only 15 acres, we'd be zoning this at 80 units per acre, right? There, we are a dense town, but nowhere are we that dense. So, this is our way to spread out the density and assure that what we're zoning almost matches what's in that area. Our goal is to keep it slightly below every district, right? So, every district is zoned just under what exists there today. We increased the lot size to assure that subdivisions wouldn't see additional growth. I know that there might be concerns, there were with RPM, a great concern that was, that was brought to us, and I think amendments were made to kind of hone this area in. That's why you see the unit density per acre increase in the Governors Park area, right? To make sure that the math still works. I know that the CBD, as I said, that there's still concerns about, that people will still go through site plan approval with the planning board. We will still require ground floor commercial. We will still push parking requirements where we can, or will work with the town manager to develop a fee and a fund for people that, that use the parking in lieu of, which has also been in our zoning code for a long time. They'll still have to go through ZBA for variances, if they need them there, and if people take that path or are asking for projects, proposing projects, that don't meet, meet the stated zoning code, they go through a special permit path, right? Like, this is not, even in the overlay districts, if, if, God forbid, something were to happen to Governors Park or Seal Harbor, and we were to rebuild, those two areas could go through a special permit path to rebuild at a higher density or a different height or a different use, or they could utilize 3A and build under 3A, which is less units than are allowed there today. Any revisions to the current buildings or projects that are there, not only could they happen today through building code, but that's an amendment to the special permit that exists, that's an amendment to the building code for that building, that is not a 3A compliance path, right? Just so we're clear. I mean, if you want to make changes to Seal Harbor, you're not doing that under 3A, as it exists. I wanted to say all that, because I think that, without question, in every municipality across Commonwealth, this is a complex issue. Zoning is not easy to understand. Zoning overlays are concerning. State overreach, as, as a separate issue, is a concern, right? This is a plan that we feel, we have learned the law, we have dug into the zoning requirements, we've, we've presented a path that we feel, if the town chooses, is a path to compliance to keep us eligible for grants that has no real impact on the town, right? Now, maybe Milton Windsor case, maybe things happen, you know, but, but I want to point out that, that we have done our, our, what we feel strongly really mitigates the impacts that we'll experience from this, right? So, so, well, I, I want to say that, that I know that discourse can get tense, I know that people can be upset, but I do understand that I find a lot of excitement and passion that people have coalesced, care about their community, have voiced their concerns about the community, have come out and learned the law. We might disagree on what our path is moving forward, but that amount of concern, that amount of care, that amount of people showing up to these meetings, we have a lot of important issues that come before us, just like town council does. Some things that I feel are, are super important, we get two people showing up. This is an important issue, we've had a lot of people showing up, a lot of people care. I think that's incredibly important. So, I don't want that to be lost in, in what might be a disagreement otherwise, in, in how we, we see the path forward. I guess with all that being said, I'll first open it up to public comment. And then, and then we'll allow the board to comment.
I'm Jerry Thelbo from Precinct 4. I have a couple of questions, but first of all, I want to commend your board, Mr. Chairman. I understand it was a long, arduous fight to even come up with what you have, and you're to be, all to be commended on a good job that you've done. My question is this. I haven't read 3A, but it's been suggested to me that, once you adopt 3A, there's no issue on zoning. In other words, take Fort Heath, now, I don't know whether this is true or not, I'm just telling you what I heard. You take Governors, I'm sorry, take Seal Harbor 1, there's land there. Under 3A, if somebody came and to develop a parcel of property, can you stop it?
The way we've set this up, Seal Harbor's a good example, if someone wanted to come in and buy land, they'd have to meet a minimum lot size of 100,000 square feet in order to qualify for 3A. I think we showed on that map, there isn't land to do that. And then, if they met, if they demoed a building, purchased the land in that area, found 100,000 square foot subdivisible lot, it has to front on a public road, it has to meet all of our subdivision requirements, the building then has to meet the setback and height requirements that are set forth, and then they could go through the 3A path at, at that time. With what exists today, though, so that's hypothetical, with what exists today, we don't see that, without those buildings meaningfully changing or disappearing, that someone could propose a 3A solution at Seal Harbor.
I understand what you're saying, but are you the final word if you, if we adopt 3A? In other words, my understanding was that 3A abolishes zoning and its requirements?
No.
That area where 3A is, I mean.
It does not. This, our base zoning in any of these overlay districts, it's best compared in some aspects to a floodplain overlay, right? You have your baseline zoning, you have your height setbacks, use requirements, all those exist, and then also you happen to be in a flood zone. You have somewhat separate standards that you need to live by for that. This allows for this district to have its setback and height requirements, but you can also, use-wise, build multifamily development. We don't otherwise, and, and this was why the law was created, we don't otherwise have multifamily zones in our town, right? And a lot of towns had a lot of single-family, a lot of special permits, a lot of two-family. We didn't have a multifamily zone. That's why this is an overlay district that allows multifamily to be built. We would have final say in terms of site plan approval and project review, but when they say as of right, that means that we, if they meet the requirements of our zoning, we couldn't reasonably withhold approval of that project. A special permit is a discretionary permit that, you know, is entirely up for this board to grant a permit on. And that might be what you're thinking of in terms of our final say, but...
I understand.
Okay.
Let me direct the question to town council. Assuming that someone comes in, decides to build, say, a single family on some land in either Seal Harbor 1 or Governors Park, but I concentrate on Seal Harbor 1, and you reject it based on what you said, and they decide to take it to court, under the terms of 3A, will, will the petitioner be successful?
No.
What's the basis of that? I mean, I, I know you...
The appeal wouldn't... Jerry, the, the appeal wouldn't be directly to the court. It would have to come back up through the, the appellate process. In, in town, they would have to exhaust their administrative remedies first, and then go to, go into court. And at that point, it would become not only an appeal under 4817, which you, you and I have done a lot of in the past, you more than I probably, but it would also become a challenge to the, the 3A statute itself as being inappropriate, unlawful, creates, creates, creates a zone that would, would otherwise be illegal, but it, that wouldn't, that wouldn't fly in a court. I just don't think that that's going to, that's going to fly, but...
I understand your...
I think they're not going to be able to jump to the land court or to the, into the superior court and say, "I wanted to build a 1,500-square-foot house on a parcel that's less than 100,000 square feet." You'd have to go to the Board of Appeals for that first. They'd, they'd say no, and then they would have to appeal either to the land court or to the superior court. They'd say no.
I understand the process.
Right.
Out of mind, eventually we'll get before the land court or some jurisdictional court, and the question is, will the court uphold the petitioner? I don't know.
I, I don't, I don't think it would meet those, those variants or requirements that are, you know, you and I are both very familiar with. In order to qualify for a variance, you need to satisfy all of those standards, and that wouldn't happen, because, like, you're looking to build basically on, depending on what, what, how much of the lot you wanted to build on, you know, you, you're going to fall far short, you would, what would you need, 95,000-square-foot variance? That's not going to happen. So, yeah, I mean, any, anything in this world is possible, that's probably close to impossible. That's the best answer I can give. Without second-guessing judges who may not be sitting there now.
I know. I understand. And I'm finished now. By the way, has anyone in the planning board or city council received any approval of this plan? Have you sent it?
We did, we did. As Eric mentioned earlier, we've made a couple tweaks to it, but we sent this plan to the state review, EOHLC. They reviewed this plan, they had some definition changes, they had the change to special permit to a site plan review for parking, but otherwise, this is a compliant plan in the state's eyes.
My final comment, as I said earlier, the planning board's duty was to come up with a plan, whether it's accepted by the town or not. You've done your duty, and you've done it well, all of you. So, that's it, and thank you for the time.
Can you just click that on? I think it just needs to... Oh, it is.
Good evening. My name is Carol Ficella, and I live in District 4. I want to begin by acknowledging that the work that this board has done, I realize it's been a long task, and you're doing your job. However, it's a sad day for the Commonwealth that we are being forced to comply with the law that ultimately, I believe, will be found unconstitutional, depriving citizens and treating us differently if we live in a zone versus not in a zone, taking our rights of property away and taking our right to be treated equally and fairly under the law, meaning that I, living in Seal Harbor, am now under state control of zoning as opposed to local control. I at Seal Harbor, if there are changes at Fort Heath, will not be able to have a voices and a butter. In looking at the transparency and clarification, I have some questions. You keep referring to Seal Harbor as if we're one entity. I think it's really important to say Seal Harbor slash Fort Heath. Fort Heath has never been defined as Seal Harbor, and it's not on Seal Harbor Road. The reason this is so important is that Fort Heath is an apartment building with one owner. Changes can happen there that I don't believe we're really understanding fully or anticipating. We keep saying that they can't subdivide and add units. That may be true, but they don't need to subdivide. If that owner decides to use part of that property, whether it's parking lot or a parking garage, and add on to what he has, can't he be stopped from doing that? If the whole purpose of this law is to add more units, and he's complying with 3A, what's to stop him from doing that? And as a butters, we have no say. Also, you've ignored the fact that there can be reconfiguration in these parcels of land. Fort Heath can redesign those units, because there's no limit to occupancy and no limit to the number of bedrooms they can have there. This is very serious consequentially. This is going to impact the town and the residents within that neighborhood. That's my first point, to clarify that. Secondly, we talk about 8... Secondly, we talk about 882 units as if that's the magic number. My reading of the law says that is the minimum. We're required to propose something for zoning that's capable of having 882 units. Please correct me if I'm wrong, but that's the minimum. Could we go beyond those number of units? If that, again, going back to Fort Heath, that owner decides to put more units there, the minimum can be met. What's going to stop developers to go to the maximum? Go ahead, please.
We've zoned to, designed to that minimum. So, our units per acre, if they were to employ 3A, only allow a certain number of units per acre, which cap the number of units. So, we heard the minimum. We've met the minimum by the state. We're not exceeding that minimum.
Well, what can stop you from not exceeding that minimum?
They'd have to go through a special permit. It wouldn't be through 3A. And any modifications to existing buildings or units would be through building code, ZBA, or special permit path.
So, the way you've designed this is they cannot exceed the 882?
They cannot exceed what's in their district.
Within their district. So, Fort Heath...
Even 882. Well, yeah, to be fair, 669 is what we're designing to. That's what we've zoned to. We're taking credit to get up to 882. In Seal Harbor, you can see that that's...
We have about...
333.
333, but you're zoning for 669.
Townwide, in two different districts.
So, how much...
In Seal Harbor, 333 units.
So, what could be the maximum...
If you could flip to the next slide that shows the actual capacity.
Yeah, just what could be the maximum, say, at the Fort Heath?
So, right now, Seal Harbor is 394 units, as it exists.
As the three buildings.
If nothing was on that land and this overlay was to be utilized by developer, they could build 333 units.
Right, but what can they add on? I mean, can you add on?
If you take a look at Fort Heath, this is the parcel right here, okay? Look at the call-out box that we have up top. Existing units, 150. If they were to take this exact parcel, tear the building down and use the 3A overlay, legally, they'd only be able to put 71 back, half the number that exists today.
Okay, but don't assume that it's not going to be torn down. Could that developer, and this is a question. I don't know the answer. Could that developer say, "I have land here. He's got quite a few parking lots and a parking garage." Could he say, "I want to put a wing"?
No, not under 3A.
Not under 3A?
He or she is limited to 71 units on that parcel under the zoning of 3A. Under a special permit, that would be a totally different story, under the base zoning. But they could do that today with or without 3A.
Okay.
We really have tried to design the zoning, listening to your concerns, but also recognizing we have to meet the letter of the law. So, it's the balance. So, with this parcel, 71 units would be what someone could do under 3A if that building, you know, fell down tomorrow or something like that.
Okay.
And to be clear with Eric saying, to take a two-bedroom, make it a six-bedroom, which we've heard, to take that building and add more units to it, that's not 3A. That could happen today by going to the Building Department, going through the ZBA Board, or trying to propose those modifications. Zoning under 3A doesn't allow that to happen.
But zoning in its language, though, and again, correct me, its language says there's going to be no limit to number of bedrooms, and there's no limit to number of occupants. So, if they wanted to reconfigure some of those units that already exist there, could they add an extra bedroom? Could they add more occupants?
Not under 3A. 3A is not their vehicle...
Where would it stop it?
3A is not their vehicle for that approval.
Okay.
When they file an application to propose a change, they would not be utilizing 3A zoning text to make that change.
Even though the language of 3A does not stipulate...
3A is speaking to an overlay district.
I hope you're right, okay? I hope you're right.
That's what this is.
Okay, let me just see if there's anything else I want to mention. Just to clarify, Eric, when you mentioned the changing of the zoning from 2,000 per unit to 1,600, so that sounds like it's going in the opposite direction of what you said earlier, that you actually now require a smaller amount of space to put a unit as opposed to more space to put a unit. That's the very nature of making it from 2,000 down to 1,600, isn't it? That they can justify putting more units in a smaller parcel of area. Is that correct? Is that why you're making that change?
So, we had to make that change in order to get enough units across those two, because we had to make that change in both of the proposed overlay districts in order... The reason why we had to do that was so we could get the number of units that we needed to reach the 800, at least the 890 that we have here. We had to lower the lot area per dwelling unit requirement. Right now, there's more units, let's say, in this district than what we have zoning capacity for in the proposed 3A. I can't speak to how the special permit was handled here years ago when it was built. But, so what we look at is, what is the zoning say today, which is, in this case, 2,000 square feet per unit? And then we run all that through the MBTA model that the state has us use. And when we ran 2,000, it doesn't pencil out. The math just didn't work. So, what we did was we kept lowering that number from 2,000. And we ended up getting to 1,600. That was kind of the, that was the highest we could keep it and still make the math work in that district.
If you took the existing number, if you took the existing number of units and divided it out with the parcel, you'd actually end up with a number higher than, I mean, lower than 1,600, like...
Yeah, I don't want to be quoted by saying that because I didn't do the math, but potentially, yes, yes.
But...
Yeah, I mean, it's...
You know, the reality is that it's, in fact, already more dense than that, I guess, is the point.
So, is it fair to conclude, then, that in your perspective and after all your analysis, that we're not going to add any more units to these zones that you've flagged as designated zones under 3A? Can we rest assured that the state won't come in and force us to add any more units to those parcels? Because my reading of the law is, the very nature of this law is to add more units and more people to the town. So, can you say with confidence we're not going to add any more units?
It's a great question, right? And I can answer this way. We can only speak to what the law says today.
Yeah.
And we'll have to assess every change of that law as it comes. But as the law says today, we feel like we comply with it without having to build any units in either of these two overlay districts.
Okay.
Right, so CBD is different, not in 3A, not in overlay. I just want to be clear about that. But in these two districts, we don't anticipate that.
And I guess my closing comment is...
And just to...
Go ahead.
Sorry to interrupt you.
Well, that's, go ahead.
And you're right. The state's goal with this law was to increase housing.
Right.
There's a lot of communities that are not as dense as Winthrop. There's a lot of communities that don't have Seal Harbors and Governor's Parks that they can overlay. They're full of single-family residential areas. They're having a different path to compliance, or they don't have large commercial areas in town. We are dense, you know? So, if we ultimately don't get an exemption, this is our version.
Right, and hopefully, if we wait, we might get that exemption. So, that's a consideration. And I guess my closing comment is that my real concern is that the state will now have control over zoning in Winthrop. And that's in perpetuity. And you made a very good point just then. Next year, they can change it again and again and again and have more zones, more designated areas, more density, and will have no control. The home rule will be gone. And that's a sad day for Massachusetts that that could happen. But thank you.
Step up, Jack.
Hi, Cassie Woodhouse, Precinct 6. I wanted to actually follow up on the question that she just raised. So, if something does change in the requirements for compliance in the future, there's wording changes, what happens? Will we do this process again? Does it just automatically get accepted if the Town Council has voted yes on a compliance plan? Or do we then review these changes in a similar Planning Board conversation with you all, and then they would have to vote to get to that compliance plan?
Sure, it depends on the scale of the change. The difference between a language change and an actual change to the density and math, but I defer to Eric or Council, maybe if they have an opinion on that. Yeah, I think that we would treat it no different than, to give the example again, floodplain overlay, right? If there's language change, definition changes, we may just simply be notified and accept them. If there's actual meaningful density changes, we would have public hearings and inform people, and that'd be the process. But that's my assumption of the process.
Great. Does zoning typically dictate or limit the number of occupants for a home?
It does not.
What is allowed to be built by right at Seal Harbor or Governor's Park right now with the R1, 2, or 3 zoning?
I haven't run an analysis to know how much density you could fit there now. But without a special permit and an R2 zone, you know, it'd be, it'd be very few units. I don't have the numbers.
Some single-family homes.
Yeah, I don't know.
Great, and you already pointed out that Fort Heath is modeled at 71 units instead of the 150 that are there now. If this plan is voted down by the Town Council, do you have a better plan that's less impactful in your back pocket? Is, like, how would, you know, would this process look the same and we magically have the density to show? Or would then there be more impact to other neighborhoods because other neighborhoods might have less density than we have at these apartment and condominium buildings?
Geez, it's a good question. It's taken us a long time to get to this path, right? Taken a long time to get to this plan. We feel like this is the least impactful. We've studied other areas, I think Waterfront District, but, you know, we don't have another plan waiting in the wings. We'd have to really begin again and reassess. I don't have another plan for you.
What would be the controlling factor for, say, a unit that's 600 square feet and has two bedrooms already in being able to change the room configuration within that building? Is it just zoning? What else would come into play?
I think what we were saying earlier is that we'd go through the Building Department. You'd pull a building permit. If you need a variance, you go through the ZBA. Likely would not come before us for these two projects, but it would if it's an amendment to a special permit or otherwise. But that's the typical path. If you're, you know, asking to turn a two-family into a three-family in a zone that's not allowed, if you're asking to expand bedrooms within a building in CBD of Somerset or to expand bedrooms, that's a Building Department issue.
Great. Thank you, guys, for all of the work that you've done here. And so, just to confirm that I'm clear on the process, you guys, if this is the final plan and you don't have any big concerns that are brought forth today, we'll plan to recommend it to the Town Council. The Town Council would then have to decide if they agree with the compliance plan that you've brought forth, not whether or not they agree with the law or whether or not the law is state overreach, but whether or not this community can live with the plan that is allowing, in effect, less units than exist here currently.
All I can answer to that question is we will recommend a plan. And the criteria that goes into a Town Council decision is up to them and how they weigh it. We could just, this will be the plan that we're moving forward with, though. That's what we can answer.
Great, thank you, guys.
Are we supposed to introduce ourselves? Are we supposed to introduce ourselves?
It'd be great, Jack.
I don't think anybody has. Jacked-out, Precinct 1, longtime Winthrop resident. I've probably attended more Planning Board meetings since 2017 than anybody in the room. I'm very skeptical about everything that you've said tonight. I don't know what it's going to go through or not go through, whatever the case may be. The first question that was posed to Eric was, can you build, can you put a district, an overlay, in a flood control area or a flood area in the town? And I never got an answer to that. Can you put dwellings? It's not wise, but can you do it? Can you put, the state say it's a good idea to put housing in flood areas. That's the first question that was asked at the very first meeting, Eric.
Yes, I remember. This time, I remember because I remember you yelled at me last time. Yes, you can do it. You can do that. Now, does the state think it's a wise idea? I can't speak to that, but legally...
I was going to use that word.
Yeah, legally...
Is it a wise idea?
Legally, yeah. You can, as long as it's not prevented, you know, by any town regulation. One issue that we've ran into in other coastal communities with their floodplain overlays is in those overlays, although they may allow housing or other types of development, they do it by special permit so that there's additional regulatory oversight by the Planning Board or whoever the regulatory body is. That has been flagged in some communities. But yeah, you can do that.
Is it a wise idea to do it, in your opinion?
It's up to the town.
It's not a wise idea to build dwellings in a flood control area. I believe the CBD, the Senate Business District, is in a flood control area. Is it wise to build housing in a flood control area, the Senate Business District? Is it wise to do that? It's allowable, obviously, but, well, maybe it won't be allowable. They may reject that whole plan. Because why would you build something in a flood control area? It's not a good idea. And the flood areas are, have just been changed. And I believe, I'm an eyewitness, that Governor's Park is, some of Governor's Park And I believe, I'm an eyewitness, that Governor's Park is is some of Governor's Park is in a flood control area. Why should we, why should we allow an overlay there? Why, why, why should we allow dwellings, families, children to be in the way of a flood? It's not a good idea. Displace people, you have to shut down your house, your apartment, et cetera, to to clean up after a flood. It's just not a good idea. And I think the state has to recognize that. It's not a good idea. I I think that's just about right. Enough of me. But I want to know where the flood control areas are. There are new maps put out just like two months ago before this argument started about overlays. And so I'd like you to refer to the new flood control maps that are in existence today and 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 present that information to the state to see if they think it's a good idea to be building in a flood control area. Thank you very much.
Lois Baxter, precinct two. My suggestion is that you don't authorize, give your permission to the plan, town council. Three A is still being mandated. There are no set rules yet. They keep changing the law. They keep changing the numbers. And if you, would you sign a contract and let them still change the contract? That's what happened in the Milton when they went to court. Even the judge said, you, how can they not let them apply for grants when the mandate has not been finalized? You're saying you want to put in 300 units somewhere and 300 units another way. Yeah. The Senator says now, Winthrop can't handle it. Could be, maybe 100 to 200 units. 100 to 200 units you kind of do in Winthrop. I leave every morning at 6:30 to get out of Winthrop and I'm backed up to almost Dunkin' Donuts. Coming in at 3:30, you're backed up on Bennington Street past that new development, what's it, the the new apartment buildings? You've got to say no to it. They can't find you or say you're not complying when they keep changing everything. You need to see what the final plans are from the state and the secretary on what Winthrop is going to be mandated to do and not make a recommendation now or the town council. It's just wrong that you're going to say to something, I agree to this, when they can turn around and do everything against what you agreed to. They shouldn't be signing anything yet until they get a a a clearance for on the Milton case and what is legal and what is not legal. Thank you.
Hi, Kathleen Cappuccino, 49 Waldemar Ave. First, I just really want to thank you, Chris especially, for how awesome, you know, you've been as the chairman in allowing public comment without limits and just really listening to people's feedback. And I'm, of course, I'm sorry, the rest of you, of course, have listened as well, but I guess I'm directing it at Chris or sorry, chairman, just because, you know, you are the chairman. So I just, I really appreciate that you've really allowed this transparency in listening to people. Because again, this is just such an important issue, probably one of the bigger issues, frankly, you know, that's come before the town. So I just, I applaud you for that. And I applaud the planning board. You know, I am vehemently against three A. I've made that clear. No one needs to hear that anymore. But I also have stated, and I still firmly believe this, that the planning board had a mandate to look at the zoning, put forth, you know, what they felt was a compliant plan. And that goes to the town council or to the voters. So to all of you, I truly thank you for your hard work, being away from your families, you know, after a long day. I personally don't have the courage or the temperament to be on a board. Activism, I'm better at. So I just, I thank you. I truly do from the bottom of my heart. You know, Mr. Falbo brought up something earlier, and I don't know his exact words. Mr. Falbo, if people don't know, is a Winthrop legend. Mr. Falbo was very involved for many years with people like my mother, Peg Riley, and just a lot in Winthrop. So to see him at these meetings is just incredible. But I think something Mr. Falbo stated, which really resonated with me, and this frankly is really not more of a comment for the planning board, but I apologize. The town council, in some infinite wisdom, decided to not have public comment before they take a vote at their meeting on Thursday? So they're going to take a vote on three A without public comment prior. So unfortunately, you guys have to listen to my public comment now. So again, I apologize, Chris, and the rest of you that you have to listen to that, but unfortunately, I have to. But again, to Mr. Falbo's point, you know, who is the final decision maker in this? And this has been my biggest problem with three A. Three A is an ever-changing goalpost. People talk about, you know, what's the best predictor of future behavior? It's past behavior. Since this law was enacted in 2021, it has changed three times without legislative due process. Part of the reason why it's before the SJC with regard to Milton. So the fact is, and again, this is not no deference to the planning board, the 177, which is the 177 targeted communities are asked, are being asked to comply with a law that is ever-changing. And yes, some pro-three A people will say, well, laws can change. Of course, they can. Something like this? No, actually. This is not historically something that actually can change all the time. It's not. This is huge. So for me, that's my biggest problem with three A is we're being asked to comply with a law that literally we can sign on the dotted line today and it changes tomorrow. Again, past behavior is the predictor of future behavior. So we don't know what we're agreeing to. Again, the fact is, people on the planning board have made up their decisions as to, you know, where they want to go. Our town councilors have made their decisions as to how they're going to vote or not vote. A lot of speculation with nonsense is going to happen at the town council meeting on Thursday. I suggest everyone tunes in. It should be fun as to the politics and the nonsense that's going to happen probably. But again, I do thank you for your work and everything that you've done. But again, to the town council, this is a law that's ever-changing. Put the politics aside, put your allegiances aside. We do not know what we are agreeing to. And that is the problem. But again, to the planning board, I truly thank you guys.
Hi, Suzanne Swob, precinct four. I have a couple of questions for you all. I'm, I'm not, I'm not really concerned about so much Seal Harbor and what he, I am concerned, however, about the CBD. So I need to know a little bit more about that. An overlay, as I understand it, falls under the rules of three A. Am I correct about that?
Three A districts are an overlay.
Okay.
The CBD will not be an overlay. There's no overlay district that will go over the CBD at all. So when our zoning text, let's say this is adopted, is updated, we'll have an overlay language that will refer to Governor's Park and an overlay language spelling out these districts and units per acre that'll sit over Seal Harbor. There will not be a three A overlay over the CBD.
So let me then run a couple of just questions as to what could happen. So I just went to a meeting last week. I think it's, we're working on 50 Somerset right now, right? And so I saw the plans. So I'm looking at the plans. And I thought in our zoning, we had 700 square feet for a one-bedroom unit, 900 square feet for a two-bedroom unit. And as I understood it in the CBD, which is a little bit different than other areas, it's a .75 of parking space, or I don't know how you actually cut your car like that, but that's a possibility. And then if you have a two-bedroom, it's two parking?
1.25 is the code.
1.2, okay. So all of a sudden, I see a plan which has lots of one-bedrooms that are less than that. I see they want, you know, there's all these variances, like let's give up six parking spaces. And so all these variances. So I'm then worried that if you have the state come in and make some requirements, plus we have some very scary variances going on right now. We have a, we have a, a town that can't take all, can't take all of that. So let me ask how that state plan would indeed impact at all anything that's going on currently in the CBD, if anything?
All of the metrics you just outlined exist today in our code and will exist if this is adopted. There's no change to the CBD zoning at all. The references to unit size you gave are not in the CBD, in all fairness. There are the metric we've held people to in our approval. The only in our zoning code, a good thing we need to fix at some point, are in reference to the SDOD. That's a special district overlay. It's a different issue. SDODs is where we outline unit size. Those are not outlined in the CBD. We typically hold people to about that size. Often, though, it's what the market will bear, right? People, you know, aren't going to go under a certain size and they're not going to go 1,000 square foot one beds, right? They're market apartments. Parking ratio will remain the same, .75, 1.25. Your ability to pay in lieu of $25,000 per space, that's the number today, that remains the same. The only change in the CBD is that it used to be a discretionary, today is a discretionary special permit to allow parking in lieu of. This will be site plan review in all buildings in the CBD and developers will have the right to pay to get out of parking, up to 50% of the parking capacity of the building.
And you know that that is, to me, that is a tremendous problem right now in the, in the town. So that just adds.
It's only in the CBD, to be clear.
Yeah, I know.
Parking in lieu of is only in the CBD.
I understand, but it's still a tremendous problem. But I mean, it's a town problem as well as the impact that this might have in addition to that on the CBD. I think that's where the money is, Chris.
What's that?
That I think the developers will see that the CBD development is where the money is. There's no money in, probably in trying to change Seal Harbor, but there is, there is a fair amount of money that is on the table here for the CBD. And I'm concerned about it and that we do it right because it's the only spot we have. The other day I heard that, you know, the Somerset has a total of 200 square feet only for businesses. So we, we have a lot to do in the town on our own zoning problem, and I am concerned about the CBD and what that's.
Yeah, I understand. I just want to be clear, and I don't want to interrupt you, but none of that is three A.
Right now, right.
And in the future. None of that is included in in three A. So, you know, I think we acknowledge that there's potential for growth in the CBD. All of the zoning codes you referenced have been on the books for 12 years.
Right.
Right? So and the, we're now seeing a few projects come. We've seen a lot of projects proposed, not a lot built. That is the nature. It's a difficult place to build, you know, right? Lots are small, density is tight, parking ratio is held to. We've held to those things as people come before us. But but I just want to be clear for those listening and those here, none of that changes with three A.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Scott Mahoney, right, precinct three. I can empathize with Councilor Swob because I've been a condominium owner in one development that was 214 units. The other was 361. In the development that was 214 units, when my husband and I bought our condo, only 67 units sold. The remaining units, the master developer of the, of the development was approached by another developer to buy the remaining unsold units. And that developer wanted to take many of the one and two-bedroom units, combine them and make larger units. The condominium association said no. Our health codes, our city codes, our fire and safety codes, and our building codes all said no. We weren't allowed to modify the existing structure because it would impact the integrity of the building. So it was a no-go. This happened in the other development that was 361 units, same situation. So as a former condominium owner, I empathize with people at Governor's Park, property owners and at Seal Harbor. But the fact of the matter is, in a building like that, you just can't go in and add bedrooms where you want to. It's not going to fly. I have a half-story cape here in Winthrop. It's 1,008 square feet, three beds, one bath. There is no way the planning board or the zoning board is ever going to let it fly for me to say, I want to take my living room, split it up and make two bedrooms. And I want to take my other two bedrooms and carve those up and add additional bedrooms. Because if the building inspector looked at the plans, if you looked at the plans, if the zoning board looked at the plans, the fire chief looked at the plans, they're going to nix everything. It's not going to work because we have structure in place.
So, ours.
Right. So let's be realistic. I've done some research. We have property owners at Seal Harbor who are investors and who are developers who own multiple units. So my question is, has anyone, any property owner at Seal Harbor or Governor's Park to date come before the planning board with zoning board of appeals, looking to add additional bedrooms to their units?
They haven't come before us. I can't speak to the other boards. I don't know. They've never come before us though.
I mean, there's, that we have, with a condo development, you can't just slap windows up where you want, right? So my, my point is, I don't think it's as easy as people are making it out to be. All right? You're a property owner, you have an investment, you have value, right? And so I get where you're coming from.
My, my, my point about that is that if I decided to sell my unit, if I wanted, if I was, let's take Seal Harbor out of here and say, I wanted to sell my.
I think, I apologize. I think for now, we'll just take comment. I don't want a lot of conversation to board. You two could have a healthy conversation afterwards.
I just, I just wanted to make that point, so.
Yeah, no, understand. Appreciate it.
Wasn't there a piece in the legislation that they changed?
Step up to the, I want to make sure everybody can hear you if they're listening in.
Wasn't there a, somewhere I read that, what he was saying, that some of these units now, it's not just family, it can be anybody, and you can go from four people living in a condo to eight people, and they don't all have to be related? Isn't that what's part of the zoning change?
That's not, that's not, that's not a, that's not a part of three A. That can happen, that's not a part of three A. That could happen today. You could have eight people living in your house. I don't ask their relation, but it's not, it's not a three A law.
Three A, if somebody built a condo or took over a condo, they couldn't do that with families under the new legislation?
I'm not sure I understand the question. I'm sorry.
I read that somewhere. I'm not sure, but families, families in a unit was being reclassified.
Pat Costigan, precinct one. Thank you to the planning board, a lot of hard work. And I do understand that you are just basically advocating for a solution to three A. I understand that. And thank you for your work. This has been, again, I'm not going to ramble on with regards to how this is divisive, but and hopefully it won't take too long tonight as well. Carol's comments as it relates to Seal Harbor and Governor's Park are still legitimate. You know, we, we haven't even taken care of the, the condo docs and they're superseding those. There's no let ahead. I know I'm beating a dead horse here, just one point. And Chris, your comments as it relates to the current, current plan with the three A overlay here is in accordance to the current law that is, the state is upon us here. So and to Carol's and Suzanne Swob's here, who's to say that isn't a change when, say, they don't achieve the false, the false need for these affordable units, which is my own opinion? The, the population in this, in this state has not increased. It's actually maybe gone up 500 people or so. So the need is there. I'm not going to get into the other points I've made with regards to how this is a developer's dream. I think you know where I stand with that. But who's to say that these, these areas in which you have outlined, in accordance to a comment made over here with regards to being able to subdivide? Under three A, that's totally legal. You can go in and subdivide these units. I, I don't, am I wrong?
The units or the parcels?
The units themselves. If there's two, two three bedrooms, I can go in and I could put two people per bedroom, one car apiece, or 1.5, whatever you want to call it. I'm just saying, that is a possibility here.
We answered that question. That's not three A. That's the building department. They're not utilizing three A to do that. We've answered that question several times tonight.
No, no, I'm just saying, under the three A overlay.
Yes.
Can I go into any unit here, like say Governor's Park, buy, buy a two-bedroom? Can I rent out each bedroom in that facility there?
If you look at the condo docs, you have to talk to the building department. That's not three A zoning that would allow you to do that. That's incorrect. We've said that several times tonight.
Okay.
It's the same questions. I mean, so if there's new questions, we'd love to hear.
And I understand that. So you're, so you're saying you can't subdivide an apartment?
You can subdivide a parcel. The zoning speaks to parcels, which is why the parcel sizes, we kind of spent a lot of time talking about tonight, 20,000 square feet. Yes.
I get that. I get that. But if I'm, if I'm correct, the initial conversations here, just, just a couple of months ago, had to do with the ability to, and again, if Suzanne Swob was to sell her condo, you're telling me right now that a developer couldn't go in and rent out each bedroom?
Developer could do that if they wanted, not under three A. Three A is not the vehicle for that to happen.
So this is only a lay-down area?
This is a zoning law. This is a zoning law.
It's, it's a zoning law.
If he wants to rent out multiple bedrooms to multiple people and he doesn't know if they're his cousins or his sisters, that is not a zoning law.
Okay.
So we've had a lot of conversations about it.
Here we go with three A and zoning. We're separating two again. So are we voting on zoning or are we voting on three A this time? I'm, I'm just saying, with regards to, it's a little confusing as to, then this really doesn't matter if it's three A. If this is just a lay-down area, then this really doesn't matter. Is this all this work for nothing here?
I'm not sure I track. I'll, I'll listen to the rest of your comment. I'm not sure I track the thought anymore.
I'm confused as to three A allows you, allows you to rent out, rent out units and rent out bedrooms. Am I not, am I not correct here?
So, so your, your understanding is that three A is dealing with individual units?
Yes.
Am I getting, okay. That is not correct. Three A is at the zoning level. Individual units will have to go through the building department, through the zoning board of appeals. That is not this.
If you built a new building utilizing three A, then your concerns about bedrooms and those are what you're probably thinking about the text of the zoning is speaking to. A new development, a new multifamily built under three A. As it relates to Seal Harbor, the existing structures and infrastructure that's there today, and Governor's Park and the existing structure there today, you couldn't go into one of those one-bedrooms and make it a three-bedroom, utilizing three A as your approval vehicle. You'd be utilizing a variance or going through the building department. Three A is an overlay district that does not speak to that.
Okay, thanks for that clarity. Thank you. Appreciate it. Good with that? Okay. And to Suzanne Swob's, the main concern here is the CBD. I'm in agreement with Suzanne as well in looking at that $25,000 to buy out 50%. I'd like to ask the question, where does that money go with regards to 25,000? I'd like to ask the question, where does that money go with regards to $25,000? Does that goes back to the general fund?
That's a question for the town manager. It's $25,000 per space. That number should be revisited, but that number was created when you build structured parking. General contractor would quote you that structured parking would cost about $25,000 to $30,000 per space. So each space you buy out will cost you that. There's a lot of things. It could go to an affordable housing fund. It could go to a fund that the town could later utilize to build a structured garage to accommodate parking. The town manager can answer where that fund goes.
I'll ask the town manager. Not a problem whatsoever. Regarding the CBD itself, in looking at the, the overall design, and again, you know, taking those units that we're getting credit for, you know, four-story buildings to each inlet to that, that CBD, in looking at that design criteria, four stories, and then we have some two, two and a halves outside of that. Has any consideration been given to the safety aspects of the central business district? As we know, the Somerset 29-unit apartment there across from the Book Depot, which now has an exclusionary zone for ladder trucks and fire trucks. Has the input been given by, say, the Winthrop Fire Chief as it relates to that type of design down the center if we do go ahead and fully develop that? We're not looking at this for tomorrow, next year. We're looking five, 10 years down the line here.
Yeah, I'd say, I'd say, just to, we're, I'll say two things, right? One, we're way off topic. This is not 3A, but every project that comes before us in the CBD that goes before the planning board, it goes through a site plan review. Fire department sits at it, building department sits at it, DPW sits at it, town manager sits at it. They review it for exactly those, where's the trash coming from? Where's loading coming from? Can ladder trucks adequately reach it? Exterior walls are two-hour rated for fire prevention. Building separation distance, all matters. All those things are considered. Absolutely right.
And I, and I get all of those. And I'm just looking down the line here with, you know, we talk about a congestion problem in town. We look at the four-story buildings that outline the CBD. The safety issues that relates to ability to fight fires, the vehicle issues that the buyout of 50%. Where are these vehicles going? And by the way, has, has anyone conferred with the Chamber of Commerce in town? There's been somewhat silence as it relates to this being the center business district. What are the requirements under, say, one full development of one block? Is it one business underneath? I mean, we, we do have the Somerset units that just was put up and finished, and I think they have their, you know, their property office in there. But I think Suzanne Swope also noted that there's not too much in, in business development there. So what type of, of business complex, or should we say, center business district are we and will we be looking at with some of these changes? And the provision to, to exclude special permit and only approved by the planning board itself? I believe the planning board is an appointed board, if I'm correct?
Not only approved by the planning board itself, but I think that it needs a variance, goes through ZBA first. ZBA looks at it, it comes to us. Every building is independently reviewed for, for business. It sounds like we should maybe have a whole separate meeting about the CBD because that is, that is not on the docket tonight, and that's not 3A.
It's, but.
Good questions.
And I understand. But you have to remember that three, that the CBD has been a center point of how we come into compliance with this 3A. So yes, it, it, it is a big concern here.
I want to point out, I think that you're very right about that. Nothing changes in businesses on the ground floor. Our requirement for commercial space, our parking requirements are unisized. None of that changes in 3A.
Was it, the, the change that you did note in the presentation was taking out the special permit provision?
For parking in lieu of.
Correct. And why was that done?
The nuance there is you cannot require commercial parking.
I just don't understand that.
Oh, I'll explain it again. You can't require, commercial, you can't require commercial parking in MMU district. So our way to get around that is remove the special permit language.
And, and I understand that, and it's counterproductive. You have four-story buildings, exclusionary zones, limited parking, no parking. I mean, you know, you go to, you go to the Book Depot and run in for a cup of coffee and, and, you know, next thing you know, you're in there a couple of extra minutes and, you know, now you, now you've exceeded your 15 minutes out front, and now you're rushing around. So I, I see, I see the vision. It's strictly going to be a walking business district. But the question is, what businesses and what's the requirement for businesses underneath these four-story complexes that eventually will make their way to the center business district? Those are only my questions. And again, the congestion in this town is noted by several people here. I work, you know, in town luckily, but I do dread leaving town after 3 o'clock. And safety is one big concern of mine as we go forward with all of this. And again, if this is approved, does the state change it? Is, is my question. So I'm not sure we can actually trust the state at this point. But to sum up my, in closing, I am for the exemption, the exemption, the exemption. Get 3A out of this town. It's, it's, it doesn't fit the town. And let's get on with some serious business in Winthrop as opposed to being dragged through the mud in this, this terrible bill by the state. Thank you. And thank you, planning board. Appreciate it.
Hi, good evening. Clara Rojave, precinct three. I want to thank you, all of you, because this is not only incredibly divisive, but you have poured, not only all your professional knowledge, but also hours and hours of listening to the town, questions and concerns and feedback in how to make this compliance the less impactful for Winthrop. And I think this plan really reflects the how we can comply, you know, cross-check, do a paper compliance, and be the less impactful as possible. No one can predict what's going to happen next year administration-wise or regulation-wise, but I think professionally speaking, you guys have done an amazing job. I just want to put in the, in the note, that it's not easy to have so many emotions sometimes in a town that is so rooted in its traditions and try to comply with something that they see, many, many citizens here see as a threat, which is reflected on paper. And really, no one knows what's going to happen. And, and we need to either be, be fine with it, because it's the same as, I would say, transit laws. Will transit laws change? Housing laws will change? How we can predict the future, I think is absolutely impossible. If we can't just comply, I think it's fantastic at this point. Again, I just want to say, thank you, everybody, for your hard work. And just a note for the audience. I want to introduce myself. My name is Clara Rojave. I'm a real estate expert. I'm expert in the subject of coliving. And I feel that many of you have been very, unfortunately, missing informed on what coliving is. When you put people together that are not family for convenience and affordability, there are many aspects that are completely wrong and that are being utilized as a way of making 3A anti, something not good for Winthrop. That's really not the case. I'm very open to have one-on-one coffee with you or two coffees, maybe, and go over what is coliving really about. How does it work in the town of Boston, in the city of Boston? It's not the way that you have been informed. I just want to make that very clear. And I'm here to volunteer to help anybody in that regard. Again, thank you and congratulations.
Thank you. All right. One more? Yeah.
John DeRoss, precinct six. I just want to add my sincere thank you, being a member of the town council, which is more or less a volunteer role. Also being on the climate commission, where I work every month with some dedicated expert volunteers who put in a lot of time and effort. I see the task that you guys were handed going way back to the beginning of your work, and I think you've done a tremendous job. You've brought hard work and effort, your expertise. We look to you as the experts in town around zoning. When I joined the town council in January, I had not even heard 3A. I think it was the first meeting in February. Suzanne probably remembers this. I think our first council meeting in, in February was the first time that 3A was brought not only to us as council members, but to the town council, period, was my understanding. So if we just take a step back and look at what's happened in that period of time, to echo what others have said, I think we've all gone to school about zoning, and I know for me, I'm learning more every day. So you all are key to us all understanding what this is all about. Coming into tonight, I had four key questions, and I just want to quickly reiterate your clear answers to each. My first question was, how will your recommended plan change the town of Winthrop in any way, if at all? My clear takeaway from what you've said is the impact will be zero.
Correct.
Is there any chance or any possibility that your recommended plan could result in overdevelopment? I hear from people in my precinct and across town, we don't want to become the next Seaport. We don't want to become the next Revere Beach. Again, my clear takeaway is that your plan will not result in that happening. Is there any impact to current homeowners in Seal Harbor 1 or 3, or Fort Heath, or Governor's Park? And due to the very good questions from folks like Carol and others who have worked hard to vet all the necessary questions, my takeaway from you is, no, the residents of those locations will not be impacted. The other one, will the mixed-use nature of our central business district be impacted at all? As a former member of the licensing board, dealing directly with most of the small businesses coming into town as they are starting in town, this is a key question for me. My takeaway, you said, Chris, no. CBD will still require ground-floor commercial. It has been that way for 10-plus years and will remain that way.
Exactly right.
Did I get anything wrong?
Nope, that's exactly right.
Okay. Let me ask one quick question, because you guys mentioned it towards the end of the presentation, but I think, I think for my sake and I think for a lot of people's sake, maybe just explain it a little bit. You said towards the end of the presentation that you're including a provision for 10% affordable housing. And there's a statistic up there that is a parenthetical that says 80% AMI. Most of the world does not know what 80% AMI means and what 10% affordable housing is about, although it's been a frequent topic of discussion when we've talked about 3A, whether this is about affordability or not. Can you just take one minute to just further explain what that piece is about?
I don't know. Eric, you want to, you want to take, we didn't do an economic study, but you can kind of walk them through 80% AMI.
So the provision that we're, that we've put in front of the planning board in the zoning is, let's just take a hypothetical development, if it were to happen, of 100 units. And if it were to happen in a 3A district, 10% of those 100 units or 10 units would need to be deed restricted or income restricted to households earning no more than 80% of the area median income, which is defined by US HUD. It's a region-wide, Boston region-wide. I don't remember exactly what the numbers are. The income restrictions vary by household, from a one-person household up to maybe a five- or six-person household. I want to say for a household of two, the Boston 80% income is around $100,000, $120,000. So I don't know if this is what you were getting at. 80% of AMI is still actually pretty high, for better or worse, because we live in a very expensive place. But that's generally what it would say. So if some development were to happen in a 3A district, you would take 10% of those units and you would, you would set them aside for people who would income-qualify.
So my takeaway from that is, first of all, congratulations, because my understanding is nothing in 3A requires affordable housing per se. But you chose to exercise what I believe is referred to as inclusionary zoning. You added that component to at least make an effort that these units would have to be affordable, 10% affordable. So thank you again for all of your hard work, and thanks for answering our questions. And to Kathleen's point earlier, thank you for letting public comment go this long. We need it and we appreciate it. Thank you.
We got one more, Jack.
I apologize. I know it's really late, but I just wanted to summarize what you guys have said so far. And also thank you again for your professionalism and your thoroughness on this. And so from what I understand, this proposal has a no new building requirements, correct?
Right.
This proposal has no impact on the CBD, correct?
Waving special permit on the parking in lieu of is the change of the CBD.
Otherwise.
Otherwise, no zoning changes.
No zoning changes. Okay. And then I did want to ask a question about the future. If they were to, if the state were to make a modification, let's say, something along the lines of taking these units that they've got an overlay requirement on, clearly we've been exempted based on what has been already approved. But if the state were to say, "We want 15% of all the units in CBD overlays to be affordable housing," would we have to comply without a doubt, having that we are, let's say, the town already approved it? Or would we, would we be able to then say, "We do not agree to this"? In other words, when there are zoning changes mandated by the state and then the law changes, do we then vote upon it and then, as a town? Or how does that work? And have you ever had precedent in that category?
I don't know. If you all want to take it, I guess my response would be, if there's something that's unpalatable to the town, just like where we would be adopting zoning, we'd have the right to rescind and remove sections of our zoning. Right? So we could remove it and vote on it, if we didn't have a pathway to vote on it immediately. But we, we would be voting to add sections to zoning, add a 3A overlay. And we could, at any point, it feels like, fall out of compliance by voting to remove this section if something became unpalatable. Is that a fair assessment? This is, this has not happened before, because people are just adopting it, but, but that, that'd be my, that'd be my interpretation. I don't know if there's others.
That, that's pretty on point. Yeah.
So in summary, if something were egregiously changed on the guidelines and of the 3A law, we would then be able to be out of compliance and just say, "No, thank you." Pretty much, down the road, if we wanted to as a town. Jim?
Thank you, councillor. The one that I can think of that is most recent is that floodplain overlay district. And we were mandated to do it. And when I say mandated, the state says, "We must do it however." They say, "If you don't do it," and I think that's a realization that some communities may say, "No, we don't want to do it." But if you don't, you're not going to be able to be participating in, in the flood insurance program. So that is similar, but not exactly the same as, as the 3A, where they say, "If you don't adopt these overlay districts, you would not be eligible to apply for certain grants." Similarly, if we did not, and the council did vote to adopt that floodplain overlay district, no, we wouldn't have it, but then we wouldn't have flood insurance either. That's the punitive part of the law. So I think there's some realization in the legislature that there may be some pushbacks on things that are foisted upon cities and towns that those cities and towns may think are just not palatable, you know, to adopt. So the long way around to your question is, yeah, we can push back.
We would have the ability to push back. And B, the answer was, yes, there is precedent, not exactly on this type of zoning, but on flood zones. And there is precedent of the state being somewhat bullies and forcing the towns to comply with zoning or else. And then that, you know, so I appreciate all your answers, and I appreciate all the attention to detail and for this proposed solution. Thanks again.
Thank you.
Todd Sago, precinct two. Proud member precinct two, the only one that got this election right by not voting for Lydia or Harris. Thank you. I will also just, I want to dovetail off of the, this incessant need to keep reminding everybody that as the law exists today, which was pointed out, there'd be no impact. But again, that's as the law exists today. That could change. That's what the state does. State, currently state representatives use words like crush Milton and, you know, "We're not going to stop. We're going to go after every community. We're going to withhold this. We're going to change the rules." I want everyone to remember that. It doesn't just disappear. That's really all I had. I want to thank you. I'm not going to continue the kiss-your-ass-a-thon that's going on here for 20 minutes. Thank you for your work.
Fitting way to end it. All right. No more public comment. We'll take it to a vote. So first, I'd like to make a motion. The motion is that the Winthrop Planning Board recommend to the Winthrop Town Council that Winthrop's MBTA 3A plan to create two... that Winthrop's MBTA 3A plan to create two overlay districts referred to, and these are just the names we've given them, we understand the nature, two overlay districts referred to as Seal Harbor Road and Governor's Park, and associated zoning language for those two districts, as drafted by RKG associates, be adopted as submitted. A yes vote signifies a favorable recommendation to Town Council, a no vote is a negative recommendation of the plan. Sarah Jane Fornes, how do you vote?
I second that motion, I vote yes. I vote yes.
Alyssa Gamble?
Yes.
Honor Merceret?
Yes.
Jason Palutro?
Yes.
And I vote yes to recommend this plan to Town Council. It's unanimous. Appreciate everybody's comments tonight, appreciate everybody's comments over the last year-plus, thanks for your participation. Make a motion to adjourn, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Thanks for coming.